Good evening. I am going to return to session. This is the December 16th, 2024 School Committee Meeting. This meeting is being held in person and/or remotely as an alternate means of public access pursuant to Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2023 and all other applicable laws, temporarily amending certain provisions of the open meeting law. You are hereby advised that this meeting and all communications during this meeting may be recorded by the Town of Hingham in accordance with the open meeting law. If any participant wishes to record this meeting, please notify the Chair at the start of the meeting in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20F, so that the Chair may inform all other participants of said recording. We have Harbor Media recording this evening, as well as we are recording on Zoom for purposes of the minutes. Is anybody else in the audience or online recording? If you could throw your hand up? No? Okay. So moving over to Item 4, Approval of Minutes. We have two sets of minutes tonight.
I will make a motion to approve the minutes of the School Committee Meeting held on December 2nd, 2024.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
I will make a motion to approve the minutes of the School Committee Meeting held on December 10th, 2024.
I will second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right. Item 5 is Questions and Comments. This is the portion of the meeting that we have set aside 15 minutes to take questions and comments for items that are not on tonight's agenda. Our practice is to take questions and comments for new business items. Does anybody have anything that they would like to share? Okay. All right. So Item 6 is the Superintendent's Report.
Thank you. This evening, we're thrilled to announce that HHS Spanish teacher Stacy Turner has accepted the position of interim World Language Director and has begun her role this week. Stacy is actually on the call this evening, and again, very thrilled that she'll be joining our team. So I'm grateful to Erica Pollard for wearing two hats this fall, serving as both the interim Executive Director for Curriculum Instruction and the World Language Director. And I'm very pleased that Stacy will be taking the baton this week. So Stacy will work closely with Erica over the next few weeks, and will be out and about in buildings, getting to know our building administrators and staff. So Stacy, if you'd like to unmute yourself and say hello to the committee, you're welcome too.
Welcome, Stacy.
Hi, thank you so much. I appreciate it. Thank you for the introduction.
Great. Thanks, Stacy. And you'll be joining us at a School Committee Meeting in the future. So thank you.
Amazing. Thank you so much. I am sure Erica thanks you as well.
Oh, yes.
So next up, we would like to congratulate all of the HPS students who were honored at Hingham's G A R Hall this Saturday as part of the Patriots Pen Voice of Democracy Essay Contest. Senator Patrick O'Connor gave a keynote speech, and he outlined examples of the long history of bipartisanship in the Massachusetts Senate. The students very much enjoyed hearing his speech. And I'd like to congratulate HMS students Henry Beisel, Evangeline Koven, and Ryan Fernquist. And I'd also like to congratulate HHS students Paige McManus, Madeline Carpentino, and Sachi Menon. They will advance to the regional level of the competition, and we wish our students well. Next up, I'd like to thank Amy Jackson, our Metco Director, for bringing several members of our team to the Metco Directors Conference on Thursday, December 5. One of the event highlights was a presentation by keynote speaker Kalise Warnum, who shared her own experiences as a Metco student in the 1980s. Kalise was very forthcoming about the ups and downs of her Metco experience, but stressed that in the end, the experience was worth the ride, and that was sort of the hashtag for the conference, "Worth the Ride." And so again, very grateful to Metco for organizing this rich professional development. Next up, just a reminder to the community that our kindergarten registration process will begin after the holiday vacation. And so on Wednesday, January 17th, we'll host an evening for kindergarten parent caregivers. It'll be an information night to highlight our program and to welcome new families to HPS. So more information will be coming out about that in the new year. Finally, this week, we did receive an MCAS update from DESI. Department of Elementary and Secondary Education issued a memo with some additional guidance on the impact of the recent ballot vote, removing MCAS as a graduation requirement. So over the coming weeks, our leadership team will analyze the guidance and propose new district student competency determinations. We'll work with the Policies Subcommittee to review our initial proposals, and will ultimately will require a vote of the full school committee to finalize district policy regarding the competency determinations. So just a quick update on that. And I did include the DESI memo in your folder this evening.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you so much. All right. Item 7 is Communications. 7.1, Communications Received by the Superintendent. Do you have anything?
None.
Okay. 7.2, Slater Apologizes He Has Got the Flu. So he will be out today. He did try to find another student to step in, but he hadn't heard back by the time he had texted me a couple hours ago. 7.3, Other Communications. Does anybody on that committee have anything? So Item 8 is Unfinished Business. We have one item, 8.1, To Discuss Purchasing Electric School Buses and Act As Appropriate. That's Ayesha.
This would be Ayesha.
Thank you.
So we've had several discussions on the electric, purchasing the electric leasing, the electric school buses. And as part of that process, we'd like to, at this point, get your approval for the electric school bus leases and to give the superintendent the authority to sign off on the lease document. It's still going through legal review and committee reviews in terms of comments. We're hoping to meet with the Capitol Committee to just gather comments on the contract. I've reached out to the Sustainability Coordinator for the Town as well to get her feedback, as well as legal, John Coughlin. So I'm hoping to pull all of those together in terms of updating, and then we shared it the committee, the Subcommittee. But in the meantime, it'd be great to be able to get your approval for the lease, as well as approval for the lease, approval for it to be on the Town Warrant in January, be placed on the Town Warrant in January. And so this contract will be for both the buses and for the infrastructure in terms of that. And it's actually good, as we discussed in Subcommittee, a seven-year lease, that I thought was the most applicable or reasonable in terms of the options that we had available to us. So I'd like us to be able to move forward with that lease agreement. Any questions?
Yes, sir. I might have misunderstood this. So did you say that John Coughlin is reviewing, has reviewed it, or?
He is in the process of reviewing it.
Okay.
So I think it's just the contract itself.
Right.
So in terms of that, once we get any additional feedback, I will bring it back to the Subcommittee members in terms of what that feedback is, so that they are kept in the loop in terms of what that is.
Okay. Great. Thanks.
So are we, we're gonna hold on the lease part until we hear back from the lawyer, or is it just going?
It's just, in terms of tonight, it'd be good to get, because we don't get another meeting in terms of, I think, until January 27th?
No, we could, I think we could sneak it on to the 13th if we need to.
Right. I mean, it's up to you, but in terms of, I would say, in terms of, the Subcommittee will probably meet as well in terms of sharing any comments, and I'll be in touch with you. If it is that you can vote on the contract and the contract to be authorized by the Superintendent, then we can forward with that as well.
Yeah, because we can't take a vote in the Subcommittee. We can't take a vote in the Subcommittee.
No.
It has to be the whole.
It has to be the whole committee.
So maybe as is now, and then if something changes, then we take, bring it back on the 13th.
Sounds good.
Sounds good.
All right. I just opened it. All right. I will make a motion to approve the contract with.
Highland Fleet?
Highland Fleet for seven years with the lease agreement that is in our packet, as is.
I will second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any questions? Okay.
I, no, you're right. I will make a motion to authorize the Superintendent to, excuse me, to sign the contract for the three electric buses.
I will second.
Any further discussion?
Do we want to just clarify that subject to review by counsel, or if Coughlin comes back with something, are we gonna revoke?
Yep. Exactly.
We are gonna revoke, but I wouldn't mind putting that language in there. Yeah.
I will make a motion to authorize the Superintendent to sign the contract for the three electric buses pending review from.
Approval of counsel?
Approval of legal counsel.
I will second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
I will make a motion to insert an article in the Town Warrant for the three electric buses for the 2025 Town Meeting.
I will second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Once we have the final vote, the final warrant language, we'll also submit that to you for approval as well.
Great. Okay. Thank you.
You've got all three microphones. You look like you're replying Congress down.
My soft voice.
Nobody's ever said that about you, Ayesha. Item 9, New Business. 9.1, To Receive the School Improvement Plan for Hingham High School and Act As Appropriate. We've got John Bucky here. Thank you for coming back to see us. Always love seeing you.
I really do stand in awe of the efficiency with which you all run a meeting. I've sat through a lot of school committee meetings, none that looked like this. All right. Thank you for giving me the hour this evening to go over the high school school improvement plan. That was a joke. I'm not really gonna take an hour. So these are our school council members. We have two teacher representatives, two parent representatives, two community reps, and we added two student representatives this year, so that we have representation from all four grade levels. And that's one of the benefits, I think, of a high school school council, is that the students really do have voice. And I think Michelle can attest, and having been at the meetings, they do a lot of the talking, which is really nice. We have our mission statement, and as we work on the Portrait of a Graduate and a new strategic plan, it's my hope that we will have an opportunity to revisit our mission statement and incorporate some of the work that we've been doing with Portrait of a Graduate and what will be the new Hingham High School strategic plan. I am inevitably going to say Marblehead and Nantucket. Just know I mean Hingham when I do. Next slide, please. So an interesting thing about being the interim high school principal is that the school improvement plan was set prior to my arrival. So these three overarching goals, mental health and well-being, which aligns nicely with our current strategic plan, student attendance and technology, that framework was in place. The work that we have done this fall is filling in the action steps and the strategic objectives that we want to meet. So our first goal, mental health and wellness, promote mental health and well-being by exploring cellphone and electronic device use curriculum initiatives and programming. The leadership team right now is reading, and somebody phone a friend and tell me what we're reading?
Anxious Generation.
Anxious Generation. And it really is eye-opening, the, since 2010, students that have been raised on a device instead of play. And they talk about play-based childhood and device-based childhood. And so some of the stuff that we want to do is review and revise our handbook language as necessary around cell phones and device use. Our two assistant principals applied for a PTO mini-grant to pilot those cellphone holders in classroom. That is not a fait accompli. They'd like to see, many of our teachers are using them now, but there have been a number of districts this year that have taken on a full-out ban on cell phones. We're not there, but I do appreciate that we're having the conversation to see the impact of reduced screen time and device use. Curriculum, Explore Integrating the Science of Well-Being and the Incorporation of Strategies from Challenge/Success into Existing Courses and Programs. I'd be remiss not to give Vanessa Webb a shout-out with the SWEL curriculum. They did a pilot of that last spring. They've done another one this fall. She's generating all sorts of information and data. We had originally, when I arrived in July, the conversation was around, should that be an offering in our program, a study? And feedback from students was, it would be less impactful if it were a course at school. And so we're looking to integrate some of the tenants of SWEL into maybe the freshman advisory program, looking at maybe doing a parent version of SWEL and just addressing some of those core competencies from that program. Challenge/Success, that is a nonprofit through Stanford University, and they have a really impactful statement. Students shouldn't have to choose between doing well and being well. And so we're looking at the Challenge/Success curriculum. Another thing from that group that really resonates with me is success is not, is measured over the course of a lifetime, not at the end of a semester. And I do think we want to look at the stress of academics and the lack of sleep our students are getting, and the anxiety, and what we can put in place to support mental health and well-being. Programming, High School Wellness Committee to partner with clubs to promote healthy habits and speakers and assemblies. We do that with Hingham Cares, and we have arranged for four assemblies this spring through that organization. And then use our existing youth risk behavior data, existing structures, maybe the Harbor Light, the Friday Show, Spirit Week, to raise awareness around the benefits of reduced screen time. Do you want me to pause between these, or do the complete presentation and then?
Yeah, we'll take questions at the end.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Improve student attendance, reduce chronic absenteeism, and include tardies. And a superintendent on Nantucket that said, "We are always trying to build a better mousetrap." There are three things that are perennially up for discussion in schools: attendance, policies, dress code, and the third one now is cellphone use. We went from "It's terrible, we should never use it" to "It's a resource in the classroom." Now the pendulum is swinging back in the other direction. So under, one thing that we discovered is our current attendance policy allows for five absences in a term before that is impacting a student's grade. Five times four is 20, but DESI defines chronic absenteeism as 18, 10%. So we need to align our handbook that we are not granting additional absences above and beyond what the state determines to be chronic absenteeism. Data analysis, use historic absent tardy data to identify and remediate problematic trends. It will be super interesting, if you're a high school principal, it'll be super interesting to you, but what our attendance rate is Thursday and Friday after we come back from the holiday recess, and looking at February vacation, April vacation, and where some of those touchpoints are where families will extend vacations. Frequent communication around absent and tardy rates, trends, and the impact on academic achievement. And our students really had a great idea, engage students in daily, weekly, monthly attendance and tardy competitions, like class wars of who had the lowest absentee rate in a given period of time. So I appreciate the students weighing in there. And last but not least, review technology policies and processes with special attention to professional development for teachers and outreach to parents. Again, we want to look at language and policy, look at our handbook language, work with the State Administrators Association, state superintendents, the School Committee Association, and DESI, along with the Policy Subcommittee for the School Committee, to look at our technology policies and practices. We have an acceptable use policy. I'm not sure when the last time that was reviewed, but technology changes regularly, so we want to make sure our policies are up to date. Leverage a Train the Trainer model. In talking to Katie, I guess we have done this historically, sent people out to come back and be kind of tech gurus. I know we have a staff member at the high school that does tech tips for the staff every Friday, and that's a very, very valuable resource, being able to use in-house talent. Parent education, provide forums for parent education around technology, again, using our in-house and content providers. And finally, students explore alternatives to screen-based work, drop and write, SLDs, competitions, and positive messages around the benefits. I was so heartened, one of the first weeks I was here, walking through the social studies wing, to see that they were using traditional blue books for an exam rather than an online screen test or multiple choice. So that's the high school school improvement plan. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Carrie?
Yeah, just a note on the acceptable use policy. That was looked at by the Policies Subcommittee and the School Committee, I think, last spring.
Excellent.
And I guess I'd just like to say, first of all, this is great. Thank you. But on the technology one, we might want to add something about communication with, because it's a great idea to have things in the handbook and to keep looking at it, and it's changing all the time, but it's, do people actually know about it? I know parents and students sign the handbook, but I've also heard from them that, well, we didn't really read it, or we skimmed it, or so maybe a communication piece on that too, once, you know, once we're working through all those things, so.
I forgot, under attendance, the new Thrill Share app that we have has capacity to interface with Aspen to push out. Of getting the information as opposed to a mid-morning telephone call from the main office.
Just to piggyback on Carrie's mentioning a policy, so the School Committee, we also have a student absence policy, and just making sure that it aligns with that as well when you're reviewing that. Because I believe we looked at that one.
We did.
A few years ago. And then.
Ongoing.
Everything's ongoing. And then I just had a question, if you don't mind me asking another question, about the SWEL, is that the Science of Learning program?
That's the Yale program.
The Yale one? So will that be, are you thinking about incorporating that into after-school or during school, or?
It has had variations on a theme of maybe doing a pilot for students during, if they have a study, they could elect. And it's kind of fluid conversation at this point, but the fall group that just went through really gave Vanessa and Kevin the feedback that, no, we don't want this to be part of school.
Okay. Do you mind me asking, do they work, go on, do they teach coping skills and that?
They do.
They do?
Yep.
I was just reading a study, the Myrd Project, and their findings, they did an eight-year study on the actual Science of Learning project. It was like Oxford did a study on Yale's study. It was interesting. And just one of the things that they mentioned was how important it is to teach the coping skills. That's a very interesting study, so I recommend anyone. Read it.
Thanks, Jen. I know, I mean, looking at cell phones and technology and all that, it's not just screens that people were talking about, sort of, you know, it's either, it's not a screen versus paper debate, but really more about the evils of, evils of social media. And looking at the ways, I wonder if there's a specific carve-out in sort of auditing how Hingham High School uses the technologies, how they use social media. I know a lot of the sports teams are required to use social media to communicate with each other, and a lot of different, I mean, different ways that I don't even know that students are expected to not just be on screens, but on social media for school-related activities. I know, just as a parent, both of my kids, we got them Facebook accounts because they needed them for school. It seems like a mixed message, so. Just sort of, not just looking at screens, but looking at specifically social media is really what the anxious generation is about.
And we've focused our preliminary efforts primarily what happens bell-to-bell, and then looking at what happens beyond the school day would be a next step, but we've been really looking at kind of bell-to-bell within the school day, some of the tools that we'll have at our disposal, but certainly beyond the school day would be worth looking at as well.
Michelle?
Thank you. This was great, and I really appreciate the student focus on these, and the students have really been coming up with great ideas. Like, I love that they came up with that idea of a competition for attendance. I was like, oh, God, maybe for themselves. It's amazing. But depending on how competitive it gets, which in this town, it can get very competitive.
And if you're sick, stay home.
Yes. There is that piece of it as well. But the one thing, just on the cell phones, I don't know if folks saw, but there was an article in The Times this weekend about cellphone use and social media and fights in school. And Revere High School was one of the schools that was highlighted. And it was interesting, because in these schools where they're abandoning it, the students are hating it for about 49 hours, and then they're like, actually, this is not so bad. So I think it is just a good reminder. And I think that there were some reports out of the most recent school shooting tragedy, where teachers were reporting that as much as parents were saying they want, they feel safer with their kids having the phones, teachers were, but they weren't safer because they weren't listening to my instructions. And they were on the phone trying to contact parents, and there's other ways to get the information. So I think that's something to, we unfortunately have to think about as well.
I can attest to something. I work in a school where we banned phones this year, so sort of year one of that, and it was controversial for about two weeks, and I think it's universally supported by the teachers and not really fought against by the students.
That's good. That's good to know.
That's good. All right. Anything else? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, that's right.
I'm gonna look at that now every time I ask that question. Nat's gonna second us.
I'm leaving it to you, Matt.
I will make a motion to improve the school improvement plan for the Hingham High School for the 2024 school year.
I will second.
Any further discussion? 2025.
I didn't want to correct myself.
Second that.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you very much. All right. 9.2, To Receive a Presentation of the Building Thinking Classrooms.
Great. Well, this evening, I'm thrilled to welcome Sarah Jacobson, Mallory Lynn, and Dave Jewett. Of all of the initiatives we're working on this year, this is one of the initiatives I'm most excited about. I really think it has the opportunity to transform teaching and learning and math instruction. Need to give a particular shout-out to Mallory Lynn, who brought this idea forward. So Mallory previously taught in a district in New Jersey that engaged in some of this work, and so this dovetailed with some work that Dave Jewett had been doing with his department around building thinking classrooms, and so there was some great synergy there. And also, I'm grateful to Sarah Jacobson for joining this project. So without further ado, I will hand this over to Mallory Lynn and Sarah Jacobson from the high school math department.
So we set out and issued this grant based on a philosophy by Peter Lidle, which really just was founded on wanting to kind of change the way students think about mathematics and building that change from the environment. And so that's kind of where we started. We applied with the help of Katie to the Hingham Education Foundation and were awarded two kind of pilot classrooms for this year, where we reinvented the space and along with that, kind of provided some PD instruction for our colleagues based on what we were reading in the book.
So just a quick look, the book's divided up into 14 frameworks. We have the opportunity, Mallory and I, to lead PD for our department this year. So in October, we led a session on all about thinking tasks, what we're providing students, and that was a great session. In December, we had a new session about basically what the classroom looks like. So our classrooms are beautiful, but also the existing classrooms, resources that we already have, what we can use. And then in April, we're gonna lead a session centered around answering questions and note-taking. The book was unbelievable. I was super psyched to read it this summer. And then on the next slide, you'll see we were. And then on the next slide, you'll see we were very, very excited about these beautiful classrooms. So you'll see on the left is my classroom, the right is Mallory's. We have brand-new whiteboard desks, so students can write right on those. Collaborative, so students are working in groups. All around the room are glass whiteboards, unbelievable. Every piece of the wall is now a writing surface where students can discuss. In the back are beautiful-looking, like Starbucks, whiteboard tables. You can sit there, and students can gather around and stand or sit. And again, those are whiteboard desks. And then a whole lot of expo markers and erasers. It's just been an unbelievable start. So this is just the classroom, but the real magic is the students.
Yeah, so when we wrote this grant, we had the students in mind. So we wanted to find a way to kind of just reinvent how they view math and how they engage with the content. And so when they come into the room, they immediately have a choice of working either standing at the vertical whiteboards or kind of taking up space on one of these larger tables, maybe meeting as a group around one of the cafe tables. And just in them presenting their work on these surfaces, it's really changed their access to feedback, and so they can look around the room and instantly see how other people are approaching a problem. It provides Sarah and I a great opportunity to give feedback, rather than kind of the traditional raising your hand, waiting for us to come answer a question. We can just look and see their thought process instantaneously. And that has allowed us to get a little deeper as we discuss the content and go through more content, because they're all kind of, the students have the autonomy to work at their own pace, and we can assess and kind of get all, capture all of that in, in the single-class period. So that's been great. The students have commented, you know, they've given us tons of feedback as well. So they love the fact that the space allows for collaboration, and it kind of invites them to share their ideas with one another. They also have really expressed an interest in the non-permanency of the surfaces, so it's so much easier to kind of erase a mistake and keep going. And that is an energy we want to harness. We love that idea of learning from your mistakes, moving on, and, and kind of sharing them as part of the thinking process.
Another huge piece of the research is around group work and randomly, visibly random groups. So students are working with different people every day, in my opinion, equally as important as the math that we're teaching. It's, it's produced amazing opportunities to take on different roles than they're used to if they're just working with friends or the same person every time. The social stress of being in a group or left out, that's gone, and I, I have absolutely loved it. I've seen students grow already, awkward for about a week, but past that, the research, we really dove in and just said, all right, we're trying this, and it's, it's been unbelievable. Students are pushed to discuss with, you know, get, get out of their comfort zone and discuss with others and help each other. So that side of it has been amazing.
And lastly, we're, we're really trying to use this kind of strategy of teaching to build problem solvers, and that's what Peter Lidle echoes, and that's what we're seeing, that these students are, are less likely to feel stuck and more likely to try something. And we hope that that's a skill that kind of transcends beyond just the math classroom, and something that I think we're very proud of, that we're seeing in our students.
And we just have to take the opportunity, huge thanks to the HEF. This year has been an unbelievable start. Thank you to everyone in this room that has helped get it off the ground. It's, it's no small task, but there's been a lot of excitement around our whole department. And, you know, we're excited about the new furniture, but the philosophy and the, you know, trying new techniques has, has been really exciting. So thank you.
Very grateful to both Mallory and Sarah, and also to Dave for their leadership on this. And I'll just say that this is, first and foremost, an academic initiative, but it's also a social-emotional initiative, getting at a lot of that human interaction and collaboration. And I also will say, preview of coming attractions, this aligns so well with our soon-to-come Portrait of a Graduate, hitting almost every box of some of the skills and competencies that will be stressing in the Portrait of a Graduate. So really terrific timing and great synergy with this team, so very grateful for you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mallory, for bringing this to a grant, and I appreciate it. We, we got to see the rooms when we did the town governance. Katie had, we were, there was a town governance. Yes, New York Peak, exactly. And it's beautiful, you're right, the, the classrooms are gorgeous. And I just wanted to write on the desk, because that was amazing, so.
I just had a thought pop into my head when I was looking at those pictures, and I'd like walk around the rooms every day, and I remember really, first week, that was so much like a college classroom or a work environment, and a math chemistry program, and that's what it looks like in a workplace. So, like, I remember my whiteboard.
And I was really struck in reading through the book, which I never thought I would say, I really enjoyed reading a book that was all about math. It was really, really interesting, and there's a lot of applicability to other disciplines as well. I could see it working really, really well in a variety of contexts, so it's all just really impressive.
Yeah, of course.
No, I just, well, first of all, I just want to thank you, thank you to the grant, Hef Grant. The problem-solving collaboration, it's such a lifelong skill for, for all the students. And I really appreciate the idea of you doing random pairing up and that changing. I think that is fantastic, and I hope that continues. I really like that idea.
Helps with the social anxiety.
No, I was gonna say, as a more-than-reluctant math student, when I was in school, God, I hated math. Sorry, Dave. The skills, I got them, but I hated it. But just watch, like, seeing those photos, like, you can just see how I can feel, I could like feel how much less anxiety-inducing that is, because you're not just sitting at your desk being like, why is everybody else doing that problem so fast? I don't know what I'm doing, and like, wait, what? Like, if you just be like, oh, it just, that's really amazing. So thank you for bringing it forward.
And everyone's engaged, too. Like, there's nobody just kind of sitting, and yeah, no, this is really cool. Thank you.
I think you gave a lot of shout-outs to the students leaving their comfort zone for this. I just want to equally acknowledge it's teachers leaving their comfort zones and administrators leaving their comfort zones and teaching in a very different way. So I think it's really, we're really lucky to have teachers who are so flexible and really able to take that leap. So I want to give you guys credit a lot. And just thinking about expanding, Erica talked about expanding this, you know, to other disciplines, I think also to other age groups, thinking about what if this is how kids learned math from elementary school? What types of math students would we have in high school if this was their entire process through math, before they learned how to hate math?
I don't know who hates math.
We've already established Michelle hates math.
Can you tell you what happened? It was fourth grade, and we were doing the multiplication table, and the game was, the teacher would throw the ball, and if you got the answer wrong, you had to get up and stand on the corner, I swear to God.
Oh, no.
Thank you for your sympathy. I don't do that. It's a true story, and I will never
Not in Hingham, no.
Not in Hingham. Not in Hingham. I'm much delighted to see this. It's the new way we're teaching children.
I'll just say, Hef is, has super excited and, you know, about, about this, and I know they continue to think about how they can help build more thinking classrooms, so. Yeah, I know they've, they've seen it, but they're, they're thrilled to be a part of this.
You're so fortunate to have Hef. Value partner.
And I would add that the professional development that Sarah and Mallory provided at the high school as well, and also that math consultant at the middle school doing similar type work, has been so important, just in helping sort of reframe thinking from the day after their professional development. I think I've seen different math department members unsolicited go up and say it was the best PD that they've had ever, let alone recently. So it speaks of quality work that these two have done, but also to the idea that people are excited to have kids up and working. And I think that's prior to COVID, we had spent a long time really investing into learning technologies, and that was great and was really valuable, but COVID pushed us so far into it. I just know I'd be going to a lot of classrooms, and I'd see a lot of great work, the kids were siloed. You know, the new work in parenting, did they really see this difference? It's fantastic. And Sarah's room in particular, the difference, the boards, the new boards went up in just the last couple of weeks. The difference, the kids walk in, they just feel different, and they know it's different. There is something about the actual classroom structure that really does feel special and engaging on top of this shift for those teachers as well. So I would add in there, I think so as well. So I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, Sarah, Mallory, and Dave, and I know it is a busy time of year, so you're welcome to stay for the main presentations.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right, 9.3, to receive a special education update. Dr. Cattaldo.
I'm gonna go stand here, because my chair keeps rolling backwards. See me grabbing the table and keep pulling it, so if you don't mind.
Nope, not at all.
Of course, I should have gone ahead of that, because that's a very hard act to pull. Thank you, whoever planned that. So tonight, what we're going, oops, I probably be closer to the mic, huh? Tonight, what we're going to do is, we're gonna talk, do an update on where we are in the strategic plan that we started last July, I think it was, when the committee approved it, how far we've gone. We're gonna look through the four goals for this year, as to what we've done and what our next steps will be as we look to the year. I want to make it really exciting, like that last presentation. I will tell you, I can't measure up anywhere near that. So the fact that my chair isn't rolling backwards, well, that's probably the best thing that's happened. But nonetheless, let's talk about the four goals, if you can go to the next one. Thank you. So in terms of programming, we know there's been a lot of programming happening in the district, and so this year, we are looking at the profiles. We've been asked by many people if we would consider putting together entrance and exit criteria, why would a student be considered for a program? What criteria would we use to have a student go back in full inclusion and no longer require that program? We are in the process of doing that. We've actually put together criteria at this point, and so our next step is to bring it back to those teachers that work in those programs, and then back into the special ed community, along with, I think part of the process was to share it out with the greater community. But the first people that really need to look at that are the individuals who actually teach in that program, to help make sure that we've hit the targets of what they think would be worthwhile criteria for why we would ask a student to join them, and then at the same time, what would say is successful, that they no longer need the program. As far as the SLP, they began this project last year. We've had a lot of rollover in the last six months in terms of people going in and going out, so we want to go back and revisit that. We're looking at it, we're meeting this week as a group, and then we're going to figure out when they can have a couple of some solid early release days to really finish it up and make sure it's worthy of what we want to produce for the district. We've had other districts that have done it, and I've shared just some of that with the SLPs. I will say to the credit of the SLPs that they are motivated and energized, and despite the heavy caseloads that they're carrying, they are really anxious to work on this. Not sure what that was. In any case, so we will be coming back to you with the criteria of what we've established. The things that I'm very excited about this year is the fact that we have actual partnerships. We started a partnership with Landmark last year to work with the lab program over at East. That has been extended into the middle school. We're just beginning that work at the middle school. I don't want you to feel that we started it right in September, but I have been joining the folks from Landmark when they come down to visit. I have been visiting the classroom more regularly over at East, so we can see what is happening and, and talking. In fact, we'll have another update coming soon, just to make sure we're on, reaching our targets of what they feel we should be doing and how we're investing. We're very fortunate that we have such, such, such talented teachers who have taken on the mantle of doing these programs, and I'm really appreciative of how much time and effort they have put in and thoughtful time and effort to make sure that all the children are meeting with success. So that's important. The addition that we have this year is Dot Lucci from NESCA, who has a background in working with children with autism and other high-functioning types of learning styles. She's been consulting to the RISE program, so she's been over at South. And of course, this year, we don't have anybody in the middle school, because we're either at South or we're at the high school, and so she is working on both ends. And we meet monthly to discuss where she's at, what she sees happening in the program, what else we can do for changes, what kinds of flexibility can we give our teachers. And I think that's really critical, because she sort of has a 20,000-foot view that we don't have when we're in it day-to-day. And so we're really appreciative of the ideas that she's come forward and how she's helping us all to work together so that we can look at the thread from kindergarten to high school moving forward, and make sure that we're connected with each of the schools, that there's a thread that takes kids from the beginning to the end. And I think that was the goal that was established when we put together those programs, and I think she's really helping the teachers to see the foundation of what we need so they can all be connected and have a continuous learning experience. We have a partnership with Lynn Shade that's supporting the Integrated Preschool right now, doing professional development. I haven't been in the thick of that as much, but certainly the preschoolers, that they're very appreciative of the PD that they've gotten. And that's been a real big theme that I want to stress, is the types of PD that we've been able to offer this year. To many of our special education faculty and paraprofessionals, they have come back and openly said that so much of it has been very thoughtful and provocative and helpful for them in the classroom setting, no matter what they're doing. So we're grateful for that kind of feedback. At the same time, we're looking at a pilot of behavior tech supports to help our students. So one of the things we're noticing is that we have many, many dedicated paraprofessionals, but they might not all have that skill base of what a behavior tech has. So we've brought some behavior techs in this year, and we're keeping documentation and data to try to understand how we support our students and what more we can do for our paraprofessionals in training to help our students be more successful. That's the reality. Everything we do is with the thought of how can we make our students more successful, more independent? So we've brought this in as a pilot to see what more we can do, and should we take a group of folks next year and, from in-house, and train them, and see how that goes, and, you know, put a set number in each of the schools to make sure everybody has a chance to be trained, whether it be one or two, but to understand what we're moving toward, and how we can be more supportive of our students by making sure our paraprofessionals have a set of skills for those who are really struggling emotionally and might need greater affect in the work that they do. We're also looking at, and today we, I got to go in the new school today, it was like the most exciting thing. We got to go in because Social Collaborative is working with us to see if we can begin and pilot a therapeutic program at our elementary level. And so we're looking at some of the schools and what we have for programming. And once I went into the new school, I did not want to leave and come back to the office, I will be honest. It is magnificent. But we had a chance to go in and look at what they've, the advancement in the classrooms to help our students with any kinds of social-emotional needs, it's fantastic. The bigger point, obviously, is to bring the therapeutic program in and help us be more self-sufficient. And again, you've heard me say it over and over, and I'll say it again, we should try to find ways to keep all our students in our community. They're part of our community, they're part of our future, and how we show them that they're part of our future is by embracing them and making sure we can educate them in the walls of our schools. So this is one way that we're looking, is working with them to do a program. Right now, they've visited the schools, and now they're going to go back after looking at the different schools, and they're going to write a proposal for us. And so there'll be more forthcoming on that. Really excited, because I feel that is an area of need post the pandemic, where kids have really been struggling with social-emotional learning, and as a result, they have so many things going on inside them, then it's hard for them to be attentive as students. And then as a result, they get very frustrated. So this is one way we can help them. There's work, we're working on the progress of transitions between preschool, elementary, middle school, high school. So we'll be finding ways to make it more effective as students leave each of those schools, and leaves the preschool and go to kindergarten, leaves fifth grade, goes to the middle school, leaves eighth grade, goes to ninth grade, and even post, when they're leaving the high school, whether they're graduating at 12th grade or they're remaining with us until they're 22. We're looking at all the options. One small thing we did, and you might think, huh, why would you even think to do that? But for instance, one small thing we did is, we're looking at IEPs of current fifth graders and eighth graders, particularly eighth graders, and what we're trying to do is get all those IEPs done ahead of the scheduling at the high school. So last year, we had a lot of students that had their IEPs after scheduling took place, and then we were sort of retrofitting kids in and having to change numbers in classes and so forth. We like to get as many done as we can now, so when the students come in, they can be engaged with the guidance department and scheduling and have less intrusion in their world for making changes. So that's just one small thing, as well as working with families between the schools as to what happens when you leave one school and you go to the next. When you leave fifth grade and go to sixth grade, what will happen? We're working on all of those types of transitions. I am working with the administrators of the I am working with the administrators of the elementary and secondary level as we begin to grow that program. Again, we started last year. We've had meetings with parents in those transitions. We plan to flush those out further this year. Some next steps is that we're going to be looking for the feedback for the program profiles that I just talked about at the beginning. We're going to look at the draft with the Special Education Programming Subcommittee. We met last week with the subcommittee. We'll continue to meet with the subcommittee and the community. We'll schedule opportunities for families to engage with the administration and hear more about our specialized programming, what we're doing. And, you know, some of our feedback has come from families. That's been so helpful. That makes us look at how we do our teaching, so we're very, we find that very valuable and very appreciative that parents are willing to be forthright and share with us. We're going to be auditing the available curriculum in our specialized programs, make sure that our teachers are being given what they need as tools in those programs and what more can we do to support them. And then we also want to continue to look at how can we increase our data collection. That's critical because that helps us to decide what next steps need to be, what kinds of goals we need for our students, what kinds of goals we need for our programs. So that's the first goal. I hope I'm not talking too fast, but I don't know if you want me to go through the whole thing, or you want to stop if you have a question. You might have none, you might have 10. What's easiest for you?
Why don't we keep going?
Okay, fair enough. Thank you.
Yeah, you're on a roll.
I'm on a roll. So inclusive practices, something near and dear to my heart. We really want to figure out how we can expand opportunities for instructional strategies and procedures and staffing to make sure that all students are included. I have to say, watching that math presentation, my mind was spinning of all the things we can already do. And the one thing that really made me happy is the fact that in those classes, that will tie right to this conversation, is the fact that kids learn that it's okay to make a mistake and go back to it and fix it. So many times, we have our students, particularly our students who are struggling to read or to do math or to do writing, and they get very nervous that it's not right the first time, and we're always saying, that's okay. So seeing that math class, I went, ooh, we have lots of things we can do with that. The progress that we've had so far in this particular goal is that the D cap has been shared with all of the staff in the town, in all of our schools. Erica has, I think, you've been to all the schools at this point, correct?
I did the presentations at the high school and at the middle school, and the elementary principals shared with their own staff.
Thank you. So that was done through early release professional development. We know we have work to do on that, and we know that some of the things that are in those decaps are things that we generally put our in IEPs, and now it's becoming comfortable, where should we have some of those items set? And we'll continue to work on that. But it's great that the D cap is done. It's deep, it's broad, and I think it's going to be very useful moving forward. We're also--
Do you know what it stands for, just for the, I don't think people know what a D cap is?
The District Corrective Action Plan.
Curriculum Accommodation--
Sorry, sorry.
All right.
I knew I would do that. Thank you. And yes, I do know. But anyway, so teaming model at the middle school that allows for regular data meetings, that's really essential. I think sometimes in order to put the pieces together, we need to have those data meetings. We're doing that with more regularity. We're looking at what we're doing, and particularly the SEL data. We know the kids are struggling. We've seen it across the town. We're continuing to work on that. One of the things I'm really excited about is the fact that we're looking at, and we've had the presentation for the YRBS data, and I think that's been very helpful for all of us. Another thing that's been very helpful, and we've had a lot of positive feedback, is the fact that Jessica Minahan has come in. This is her second year or third year now, Katie?
Second year.
Second year. But we get a lot of very positive feedback about that. We know that she has her behavior code book. There'll be more coming forward with that. And Jim Levine has been in the high school to support all of the high school teachers in a way for SEL, and I'm most appreciative of that. We know there's been a lot of academies, and some of these things happened before I even arrived, and I know that as I talk about them, I'm probably going to leave something out and look to Katie to support some of the things I haven't included. But in terms of those academies, the inclusive practices, we're in year three. I was here for year two. I did not get to experience year one, but you can see the differences in the classroom because faculty has had that exposure. The SCB Academy, I'm not as familiar. You might be able to tell a little bit more about if you don't mind.
That's the Social, Emotional, Behavioral Academy, and is focusing on, largely on PBIS.
So I'm not as deeply involved in that, but it is part of what we're looking at for the strategic plan. And then again, the Literacy Academy, first year for the Literacy Academy, and I'm very excited about some of the things we'll be seeing forthcoming. And then the other piece that's been important, and we talk about it often, you hear IST and MTSS. We're looking at common IST practices that will go among from K to five through all four schools, and I think that's really important for our teachers and for our students. What we need to continue to work on is the, helping everybody understand what MTSS is and how they can use it at the high school in particular, and then refining any processes at the middle school and high school around IST. So. For the third goal, just in terms of communication, collaboration, and relationships, the families, having stronger relationships with the families of all of our students with special needs. I know we have a really strong CPAC this year, and I think that's a really great thing. I think it's also unusual that our CPAC parents also are part of our faculty, and I think that's great because we get to see it from a different angle, and working with them has been a tremendously helpful thing. The progress that we are seeing right now is the team chairs. We talked about doing this before, but I have the team chairs twice a month. We didn't do this last year, but we are doing it this year, and in the twice a month, we spend the first meeting with our legal counsel every month. So legal counsel will come in and they'll do a presentation with our team chairs to help them understand the various laws, provide them with scripts of things that can happen at meetings, and ways to help everybody solve a problem in a meeting. So our two lawyers have been coming in and working with staff, and then we have a second meeting during the course of the month that allows us to sort of do the housekeeping items that we are not able to do in the first meeting. The first meeting is always in person, and I have to say, I think that's critical for us, having a lot of success, is making sure we're present and able to ask questions. Our last meeting, we usually run it from 1:00 to 2:30, and at 10:00 of 3:00, I was asking people, saying, we have to go, we have to go. People just stayed to ask questions, and I think that's a good sign. We also have work in progress in terms of working on the special education webpage. Heather Cashman and I have taken some, made some changes. We were talking about it this week again, about some more changes that will be taking place after the holiday break that we have, and so we'll continue to have changes for that. We're collaborating with CPAC. CPAC's been working with me in terms of they want letters going out to the community about some of the things they're doing, so we're sending those letters, trying to generate greater communication and opportunity when they have events. I know they have a couple of things that will be coming up with various districts. We'll push those out and make sure that those are happening. They shared, and I don't think they'll mind that I shared this from the meeting the other day, they're putting together a little one-page document that can be shared with all our families about resources and so forth. So I think that's a real positive thing. There's more ongoing collaboration with the CPAC. We meet with them monthly. There's the wellness community. There's other partners that will use to plan family engagement activities, and we're trying to figure out what those will be. CPAC is, again, talking about some of the activities they'll have forthcoming, but they haven't set their calendar yet in all of their items. But they're also part of the PAC work that they do with Federation for Children, and I think that's clearly also very helpful. Some things we need to do, though. So we had hoped to get the handbook for special education up a little sooner. We're working on it right now, and once we're done with it, we'll send it out to legal counsel just to look it over and make sure everything we've put in there is correct, that we haven't put anything erroneous or outdated, but we want to make sure it's accurate for everybody. We'll also, and I think this is really important, curate resources for families, to help them understand about the programs in the district, the needs of different students. Articles we find, research we find, we'll be posting those to the website as the year goes on. We'll also make it really accessible. One of the things we were able to do this year is put the application for the preschool was very accessible, and we'll do other things. We'll also be creating a calendar of events and programs, working with CPAC. That hasn't happened yet, but it will be forthcoming, and also to support families understanding how we support the academics and the social, emotional learning and behavior of our students. And I give credit to Katie because she's put a tremendous amount of work in thinking this through, not just for this month, but for this year and for years to come, and how we're organizing what the path needs to be. So I thank her for that. The last thing is goal four, hold on one second because my pages are sticking, and that won't help us. There we go, is the PD. So we want to make sure the PD is really meaningful for our staff. They give enough of their time. So a perfect example is, we've done some PD with our paraprofessionals who've come back, and some of, they've been like, this is great. We wish we'd had this all along, and we'll continue to do more of that. We've had the opportunity to do things like IMZ reading, where we have people learning about Orton Gillingham and multisensor reading and Wilson reading and things like that. I think it's really important. So we've looked at the calendar for this year, and we're looking at that year-long early release to fill the time, and in this case, we're using Athena for the paraeducators. So the paraeducators are required to come for training. We've also set up a calendar, I'm just trying to see if I put it down here. I did not. We've even set up a calendar for our nurses throughout the year. So I think it's, we're really trying to tap everybody. There's a year-long PD for all of the staff with Jessica Minahan, which I've brought up. We have implementation of new paraeducator orientation. I did something at the beginning of the year in August with all of our new paraprofessionals, just talking about disabilities and some of the things, expectations of a paraprofessional in the classroom, depending what level you're working at. We've also have a draft in process of the paraeducator handbook. We'll be pushing that out soon for our paraeducators. And again, we've done a lot of PD on the new IEP, and we've done it strictly with special education, and then after the holiday, we'll begin to push it out for general education as well, so they can understand. We don't expect general education to be writing it, but we do want them to understand how it functions, why we put the things that we do, how about the goals that are contained within, make sure that they're on the same page with us, and make sure it's workable for them when they get it, because we hand this to them at the beginning of the year and say, please read this, but we want to make sure they understand what they're reading. So it's useful. The team chairs, again, are meeting monthly. We're also looking at case studies, as we know. We have the annual leadership training on legal requirements that begins in August, in which we bring our legal counsel in to work with our principals and our assistant principals and our directors and so forth. And then we continue on the literacy, so that's critical because obviously that's some of our weak areas, not just the reading, but the communication, helping children to be able to establish better ways to communicate and how to read and how to write and so forth. So our next steps, of course, as I said, is helping general educators to understand what the new IEP will look like, what it is. At this point, the entire state is using it. We were required to have it implemented no later than the Thanksgiving break, which is what they actually said. By Thanksgiving, everybody has to have it implemented. We do. I won't say it's easy for everybody because it's new, and whenever you do something new is, for those of us who had to do our very first lesson in student teaching, I think my first time I did a lesson, I don't know about you folks, my first student teaching lesson took six hours. I thought, I can't do this every night for one half-hour lesson. But, you know, it's the same thing with the IEPs. The first few are taking longer, but as they get used to it, they said they're falling into a rhythm. And I think that's important, and the number of hours it takes and minutes and so forth, it will begin to reduce as we get more regular with it, but we need practice with it, obviously, and that's the part that's most important. What I have to say is that for our, first of all, you know, the fact that we have the strategic plan is great, but what I have to say more importantly is that thanks to our faculty, the fact that they've engaged, the fact that they want to do this, the fact that they're promoting so much of what we're teaching with their students, that we're seeing some genuine positive results for students, I'm very appreciative that the faculty are willing and able to do this and that they've jumped in feet first as they've come back to school to make sure that students are being given the greatest opportunities possible. So I don't know if you have any questions? Matt?
Thank you, and I apologize for missing the meeting last Wednesday.
I don't have any walls to write on, though, just remember that.
So I always have a hard time when we're going through these, kind of, because there's a lot of progress, there's some next steps, but can you just help me reframe? We had a strategic plan that, you know, a review, and then we had some things that were going well, there were areas that needed to be improved. We came up with a list of goals and then initiatives underneath them to make progress over the course of this year, I think, well, it's kind of like both short-term and long-term, but more, this list is more short-term.
This is for this year. There's still more that will happen next year and the year after.
And, so I have two questions, I guess. Can you remind me, maybe you mentioned this already, like what would, if we hit every activity that we tried to do this year, hit every initiative or whatever you want to call them, how much improvement would that, or how much will we have closed the gap on the needs that were identified in the strategic plan? And I'm obviously, you know, just, I'm not looking for like a specific percentage, but--
I was going to say, you're a numbers person.
I like math.
So I don't think it's a matter of we'll close everything, but I think we'll approach doing better to help our students. Anytime you make changes in a district and take on new research, it can take three to five years for a huge, for a complete shift. It's not that things aren't happening now. I think what's happening is we're offering more and more opportunities for our teachers to become proficient in teaching, reading, and literacy. So that automatically has to have a positive outcome. Can I say to you, oh, we have a hun, I'm just going to throw a number, this is no way the correct number, but, oh, we have 500 students who can't read at all in the middle school, which we know is not the case. But we have 500 students that can't read at all, but once all the teachers get trained, by the end of this year, all 500 will be reading, or 490. I can't do that, but what I can say is that we expect the gap to close more quickly. We expect to tackle more at the younger grades, so as the students move up, there'll be less to tackle. I feel that, and I don't want to use the pandemic as an excuse, but it was a real setback for students who were already struggling with so many of these things. And so what I would say is, you'll begin to see closure, you'll begin to see fewer students needing the heavy support that they might be getting now. It will begin to go down, but it's not going to happen overnight. At the end of this year, we'll take a look at where we are and certainly report out. But the expectation is, over the next few years, the number of students who we are trying to support should go down because we're tackling so much at the younger grades now.
Okay, that's helpful. And then second question is, for how long we've had, for the last four months to go after those six months, short amount of time, again, seems like a lot of things have been done. What's your overall assessment? Like, this is incredible progress, this is really good progress, this is, you know, okay, but, you know, that's understandable, it's been a short timeframe, there's other things that come up, like, I just, again, it seems like there's a lot that's been done, which is good, that's very good. But you have the best view of being able to kind of summarize it, is, should we feel great about, and I know you want to be, like, I'm not looking for you to try and be negative, but I think we, you know, we've been having conversations in this district about, you know, improvements around special education for a long time, you know, well before you coming here. And so we know there's a fairly long road here, and so I'm just, yeah, that's kind of where my questions are coming from.
I think the fact that you're enhancing the programs that give the extra support for students who need the programs, like the lab, like the RISE program, and now we're looking for support also for the CLC. So I think the fact we're going to give it meaning, we're connecting it all from kindergarten up, I think that's going to be really, really helpful, and you're going to begin to get more out of it, because you'll see kids who enter it in third grade aren't going to be there in high school. We expect them to be able to graduate out of that because the supports are going to be rigorous enough. I would say that there's a few things I wish I was a little further ahead, like the Paraprofessional Manual, the Teacher's Handbook, I wish I was more ahead on that. It has been a very, very busy fall. I do recognize that, but I still wouldn't trade the opportunity to work with everybody that I've worked with. And I have to say that overall, genuinely, I've never seen teachers so dedicated. I really haven't, as I've seen in the last four months, which is great. And you can't have anything but good things come from that. I also recognize that we're, we're human, we're imperfect, we're going to make errors, and when we do, we're going to pick ourselves up, and we're going to correct it and move forward, and that's important, too. It's not going to go even keel all the way through for the next 10 months. There's going to be stop and go all the way through, there'll be a couple of potholes because that's just human nature. But do I think we're doing better? I do think we're doing better, and I think with everything we've put in and some of some of the really difficult problems that have arisen this year with students and the fact that our teachers continue to come back trying to problem solve, they are so dedicated to the students, I could not have guessed, I'm not sure I would have come back for some of the things I've seen, but our teachers cut it up every day and they are coming back in. And, you know, kudos to them. So, I think you'll see progress, but I don't think it's going to be an even-paced progress. You're going to see it go, you know, ebb and flow, reality.
Excellent. Thank you.
I would just add, Matt, that in the same way that we've said for MTSS, the academic gains, we've been seeing some great progress. I do think it's the social, emotional and behavioral needs that are lagging across the nation from the pandemic. And so, that is why we've placed so much emphasis on our professional development and so on, on the social, emotional and behavioral. And I do think that will be a next step in terms of building out that therapeutic program, for example. Again, the programs that we have, I do think are making great strides on addressing the academic needs of our special education students, but the social, emotional behavior. We just don't have the same infrastructure and need to think about how we efficiently allocate the resources we do have, so.
Jen?
I think, Katie, you kind of just answered my second part. Three questions. The first one is similar to the second. How are the, these goals going to be measured and assessed over time? And then, are there any challenges that you see are faced in achieving the goals that you have outlined? Is that my first question? And then, my second one is if there's any feedback mechanisms that are in place for the staff regarding the new programming?
Those are all really great questions. And I won't have complete answers for you. But in terms of, well, the fact that we're handing, for instance, the teachers that are part of those programs, you know, they'll be working with us in terms of the entrance and exit criteria. I already work with some of them now in terms of some more details. I visit them when there are problems and talk about how can we solve it. We hear that there's an issue. We look to see who can help support those issues if there are any. The principals have been great in terms of making sure that that's happening. I think to me, the measure of success is when a student no longer needs that program. And I don't want to put any of the teachers out of business. Let's start with that. There'll always be students who need these programs. But I think the more effort that we're putting in at those lower grades, which when you think about it, it's going to be five years out from the pandemic. It's shocking. But you think about some of those students who were in kindergarten and missed some critical pieces and now they're in fifth grade. So, there's some gaps we're working on. As long as kids are coming to school every day and getting more and more, I think some of those gaps that were created will begin to diminish. It's not going to happen overnight, though. So, I think what we have to do is look at performance of students. If they're meeting the exit criteria and then we have them exit the program, that certainly shows that they're able to succeed. But I don't think all of that's going to happen in the first year, nor would I want it all to happen in the first year because I think people will get whiplash. And they'll get tired from putting that much energy into it that they won't have enough left in their tank for the next year. So, I think it's really imperative that we pace it for everybody. So, I think that's the other thing. And then we have the other data points that we have at some of the lower levels and so forth with things like iReady that will help us to understand how students are doing, looking at practices in the classroom, even for our programs such as the LAB program or the CLC or the RISE. What are we doing in those programs? That's why we have these consultants coming in because they're working directly with the teachers and the principals of the schools those programs are in to see what more we can do. Or are we doing things that are not as effective? And should we remove those things? That's the whole point of having those folks come in.
I would just add, Jen, that you had mentioned, asked the question of how will we measure? So, this presentation tonight is part of the accountability. Many of the discrete items in the plan were kind of time-bound. And so, are we keeping pace with some of the time-bound goals that we set? And so, I do think this, these presentations are part of the accountability.
Tim?
I know Barbara and I have talked a lot about the sort of, the desiloing of special education from general, the general education. And it's nice to see so much of that in here with the, the professional development for general education teachers on reading the new IEPs. I think it's really important, the D cap, so that this, general education teachers can access the D cap to make accommodations, to, as you said, keep kids in their classrooms and at the end of the day, in the district, to make this one community and not sort of two concurrent communities. So, I'm very happy to see that. And even expanding that out so that, you know, other non-core academic teachers have access to the IEPs and extracurriculars have access to the IEP. I know, like a lot of accommodations really make, only make sense in an academic classroom, but a lot of them don't and are more generalizable for all areas of a student's life with Hingham Public Schools. So, kind of really expand that out to give special education students the full experience of Hingham Public Schools is great. And I also just wanted to say, especially, it's really nice to see a lot of the para-training and support for the paraprofessionals come to fruition this year. Really, I know that was a big part of the new contract with the paraprofessionals and really pushed forward by the HEA. And I think that was, you know, I think it's really nice to see that. And I, Jen was talking about some sort of feedback loops. I hope the HEA stays a part of that conversation even as we go forward with it, as the handbooks come out and all of that. But just want to sort of give some kudos to one of the real fruits of the process.
Absolutely.
Yes.
Michelle?
Tim may have tipped off the answer here, but I'm just curious. As we, as you transition out of the role and we find a new, hopefully, director of Student Services, what is, what would you say is the one thing that we just cannot slip back on? Like what, you've got momentum going. Like, what's that one real key ingredient to this that we just can't let slide? And I'm thinking it's the sort of the desiloing of just...
Yeah. I would say two things, actually. There's the desiloing and also making sure they're available. They've got, you know, whoever's in this position has to be ready to, you know, stop what they're doing at their desk in their office and go into the schools. And when teachers need them, I mean, one of the things I've found is that when teachers have questions, they've written me, they've called me, can you meet with me? And I just go, I'm thinking, I'll answer my emails later, making myself available. And I think the next person that would be a piece of advice, desiloing, obviously, is the most essential thing because they're all, they're, you know, I always say there's that yours, mine and ours, the old Lucille Ball movie, although I think there's a newer version that I never saw. I saw the original one. But it's, the fact is, it's not yours and mine. They're ours. These students are our students, every single one of them. And when I walk into a cafeteria, I don't want to have to say, that one I think is on an IEP. No, that one's not. That, you know, I don't want it to be that. It's like, wow, look at this cafeteria. It's so active and everybody's integrated and they're socializing and they're talking and this is what we want. And feeling great about themselves. So, that, aside from what happens in classes, it's what happens outside of classes. But I would hope that the next director will make themselves really available when they need to, you know, meet with people.
Carrie?
So, thank you for this. This is really good. And just as somebody who's old and has been watching this for a long time, it's easier, there's always more work to do, right? But it's also...
There's so much more work to do.
Yeah, agreed. But it's also great to see the progress that's happened over the time. It's significant. It really is. So...
Well, I feel honored that you let me do it. I'll say that.
No, we're lucky to have you. I guess one question, it's kind of a nippy one. I really appreciated the, kind of taking the overarching view of the programs, like the RISE program and the CLC. And I had asked this question last week, but I think Katie didn't answer because I didn't want to steal your thunder. But so, with the, you're working with NESCIA with the RISE program at the lower, lower grades. What about the high school? How are those teachers supported?
Same person is working. Yeah. Same person will do, be working with the high school as well, is working with the high school already.
That's true this year. NESCIA had started to do some preview work last spring only in the elementary.
Elementary. Oh, okay.
And kind of started there, but is now...
They go right through the high schools.
That's great. Yeah. It's just, it's invaluable to have the threads running through.
Right. And, and what she gets to do, what Dalouche gets to do that we can't, even I can't do, first of all, this is her field of expertise. So, I'm going to rely on it. But she can go in and she can see what's happening over itself between the two rooms. And then she can go to the high school and see what it looks like as the kids get older. And then she can put the pieces together of what the path needs to look like. I can't do that. I can't, first of all, I'm right in the middle of it. So, you know, it's, it's really helpful to have someone who can come in and see it. And I think that's really critical why we're doing that. And then again, the next piece is to hire someone for CLC because I think they deserve to have the same kind of opportunity.
Yeah, no, it's great. I appreciate it. Thank you.
That's it?
Does anybody else in the audience have any questions?
Diane.
Diane Napoli. I thought I saw her hand earlier. So, Sherry, if you don't mind, I'm muting her. Diane, if you could state your name and address before you ask your question? Can you hear us, Diane? Looks like you're unmuted. You should be able to talk.
I can hear her. I just heard her.
I don't know if Diane can hear us, but if you have a question or having trouble with your mic, if you want to text one of us the question, we can read the question.
So, her chat, she can do it?
I know.
No. Do you have a chat?
No.
Okay.
It was, I mean, I remember Kelly Turner was able to speak. So, you know that the owls are working.
Right.
Diane, on our end, it looks like you're unmuted. We just can't hear you if you're speaking.
She's definitely speaking because her name's up there. No.
She's texting me now. Three little dots. Love those three dots. Bear with me, Barbara. My question is, will the plan be updated to indicate progress?
Yes. Very short answer. Yes.
The slides will be available on the website after the meeting.
Thanks. She said thanks. So, that she included the, there was a timeline. So, there was an objective staff responsibility and timeline. I think she had, had been working on this to specific, to specify what was going to happen and when. So, she had included that as a picture.
So, a lot of this is, you know, we can draw it back to what was in that timeline. We can look at how to do that to make sure it's understandable.
Okay. Just typing one more thing.
Go back to sending pigeons back and forth.
She said, good. Okay.
That was it?
We're good. Yep.
Okay.
All right. Thank you, Diane. If you are all set, Diane, if you don't mind lowering your hand just so I know you're all set, that would be great. Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Barbara. All right. Okay. So, 9.4 to discuss kids in action fees and act as appropriate. Aisha, thank you.
In terms of the kids in action, just similar to the pre-care we discussed last week, a lot of the parents that are applying for preschool will find out about their preschool acceptance in early January. And part of that process, they're also hoping to, to know what options are available to them in terms of before and after school. So, I noticed this is a little bit earlier than we've done in the past. But we wanted to make sure that we got those fees approved early so that it will help families in terms of making those decisions. What we're seeing is that it appears to us at least that the, the parents of Hingham seem to be changing a little bit in terms of the number of students requiring before and after school care. And KIA has been increasing drastically over the years, particularly this year, even for our younger students that are in preschool and pre-k. So, it means expanding our services for those families as well. It appears that for most of those parents, those, those families, students are coming from two working, working fam- family members and they need that support. So, we're working, Katie, myself, Jackie and the whole pre-k, preschool team, Barbara, Jonathan Haas and Matt Shifely. We're working and Caroline Mills as well to see how we can structure the program so that we can meet the needs of families. In terms of the before and after school, we've primarily increased the fee by about 3.5% to keep it in line with the increase in salaries and supplies for the program. One of the things that we added this year in line of what I just discussed earlier is an after-school, after-school for preschool would be three-year-old students. The way the preschool is structured this year for the integrated program is that it will consist of five half-days. And, and five half-days for preschoolers in the integrated program. And in the, the pre-care program, which are the four-year-olds, it will consist of, of four and a half, four whole days, Monday to, Monday to Friday, the whole days, eight to two or 2:30. And on Wednesdays would be early release days. For some of those students who will have an early release day on Wednesdays, we would need to provide them additional support, support in terms of an after-school program. So far, even looking at the preschool and pre-k, we have at least 70 students within the preschool for KIA that are looking for those services. So, that has increased that.
That's incredible. Yeah.
As part of that, sorry, go ahead.
I was just going to say, they're each at, each of the individual elementary schools now, right?
For the, for the before and after school, for, for K to five.
Yep.
But for preschool, the way we're structuring it this year, the integrated preschool will be at Foster. And for the KIA preschool, it will be at East.
Okay.
And the, the after-care will only be at East for a preschool.
Okay.
Right. But then, but then we'll also have after-care at Foster as well for, for, for the integrated programs, right? Yeah. Jen, you were saying something?
Just with the three and a half percent increase, are these fees in line with our benchmark towns who have similar programming? I know not all of them have similar, similar programming.
It was difficult to, to do that analysis just because a lot of cases, it's a YMCA, which is a different kind of program. In Duxbury, when we looked at the Duxbury rates, we don't have it here, but Jackie and I discussed it. And it was a little bit more than what we're, we're charging here. And it's always difficult to do that when you're in a year when you're increasing rates just because you don't know what the other people are doing to the pay increases as well.
They could be increasing them as well.
Right? Yeah. So, in terms of the after-school, so you'd see that new line, after-school for preschool and before and after-school for preschool, I should probably say preschool, pre-k, where, where you'll have to provide that one day of extra hours where there'll be, there'll be an early release for the four-year-olds, not three-year-olds, but four-year-olds. Okay? So, in that case, I had to kind of look at the per-unit kind of calculation and look at the increase in the hours as well for that.
Questions? Anybody online or in the audience have any questions? No. Okay.
I think Jackie's here as well, too, so.
Thank you, Jackie.
acknowledge her hard work in terms of everything that goes on for KIA. She, the program has really expanded and it has been really difficult trying to get staffing with the increasing, the increasing students and the demands. And sometimes it requires both herself and her assistant to be working the program in addition to administering the program as well. So, we're hoping that by having those fees approved early, we can try to reach out and get more partnerships with other colleges or even, for example, Weimuth has a, looking at trying to, Weimuth has a preschool program as well. So, we're trying to see how we can work with them to get some of their students to come into our, to help work in our program as well, too. Some of our own high school students also work within our after-school student program as well. So, it's, we're trying to look at all different ways of working on the staffing just so that we can provide that service to parents because it looks like so many parents need that service. I mean, there're not many places in town or even nearby where parents kind of have that kind of service that will be available to them.
Thank you. Any questions?
Yeah. I will make a motion to approve the kids in action fees for before and after school for the 2025, 2026 school year.
I will second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Thank you. All right. So, 9.5 to discuss rates for food service substitutes and act as appropriate. Aisha, you're up again?
Right. So, then in terms of the food service technicians, we're also glad to say that we had the food service contract approved recently for one year. And as part of that occurring, we now want to make sure that we can increase the sub-rate a little bit as well, too, to kind of bring it a little bit, it's a little bit lower than the actual technician rate. But we want to make sure that we also increase the sub-rate as well to try to make sure we can have substitutes. Sometimes we have people who are out and we need to get coverage, keep the kids... Sometimes we have people who are out, and we need to get coverage, keep everything going. So this is just kind of bringing it more in line with what our contract reflects.
Any questions? No, anybody online? Nope. Okay.
I will make a motion to approve an increase in the substitute rate for food service technicians effective December 16th, 2024.
I will second. Any further discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
And then, you're up again, Ayesha. 9.6, to approve grants and donations and act as...
This one's Erica.
It's a great one. Oh, okay, sorry.
Sorry, I have, my cabs have closed on me.
This is a Cape Cod grant?
Yes, so we have a couple of grants to talk about.
And then the PTO grant from the high school?
Yes.
Yep.
Apologies when I open my things. Okay, so the first grant is a collection of PTO mini-grants that have been funded at the high school. You can see that there are quite a few of them. We've got some, and they really represent, I think, every department at the high school who's able to get something that they needed for their classrooms, including, as Dr. Buck you mentioned earlier, the assistant principals putting in their grant for cellphone holders to keep cellphones out of kids' hands during class. We'll have, this includes a presentation also by Lynn Lyons from the counseling department, and one of my personal favorites, fair trade chocolate for a very good lesson in the global literature class about the benefits of fair trade. The next set of grants comes from Cape Cod Five. We've been really successful with Cape Cod Five in the last couple of years. There are two grants that have been awarded to the science department. The first is going to be used to purchase the All About Me microscope slide set for middle school science. And the second grant will be used to purchase an infrared camera, a wave generator, and I'm not going to lie, some other things that I don't know what they are. What is a hover puck?
Oh, you bet, just for use for physics.
Okay, for physics, hover puck, for physics class, that sounds great.
All about friction or lack of...
And then, I'm not seeing the other Cape Cod Five grant memo in here, but I wrote it, so I can tell you what it says. We received, so these ones were for the world language department. We received a grant for additional books to purchase for the Spanish immersion pre-k program, and one to support the inclusion French culture class that's being offered at the high school, to buy materials for them to do some hands-on activities.
Do you have the total amount and the money amount for those?
So, for the French culture? I don't know why it's not in the folder, my apologies. $400 for French culture, thank you, and $491 for the pre-k program.
Thank you to all the teachers and directors and everybody for putting in these grants, it's amazing.
Yeah, it really...
Thank you to the PTOs for, yeah, yeah.
It really allows people to do some projects that we, you know, it lets us think outside the box a little bit for some projects that we might not otherwise be able to take on.
So that extra time putting in the grants is much appreciated. Any questions, sorry? No? Okay. Question?
Five. Right. Sike myself up here. I will make a motion to accept the high school PTO grants for the total about of $9,983.
I will second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
And then I will make a motion to approve the first grant from Cape Cod Five in the amount of $400 for the All About Me microscope slide set.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
No.
I will make a motion to approve a grant from Cape Cod Five in the amount of $495 for science equipment.
I will second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
I will make a motion to approve the grant in the amount of $491 for books for the pre-k Spanish inclusion program. Is that right?
I've just added the memo to the folder, my apologies that it wasn't there to start with.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
And I will make a motion to approve $400 for the French...
Culture class.
Culture class.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, appreciated.
We.
We.
It was either that or I was going to make a wave generator.
Or the hover puck, yeah. I think of, hover puck theme.
Or a hoverboard. Back to the future.
Oh, God, concussion on a hoverboard, sorry. All right, 9.7, to approve surplus and act as appropriate, I didn't see anything.
Library book.
Yes, just one surplus item, sorry.
I didn't see that.
That one was added very lately.
Okay, sorry.
Yeah, sorry.
Thank you.
So in terms of that one, it's just, not just, but there are library books that are being read at South Elementary School. It's kind of the same thing that we've been doing for a few weeks now, in terms of just making sure that anything that has not been circulated for a while, or has been destroyed or damaged, is taken out of circulation.
Any questions?
I will make a motion to declare surplus library books from the South Elementary Library listed and to authorize the South Elementary School librarian to dispose of them at the least cost to Hingham.
I will second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
All right, item 10, Subcommittee Project Reports and Warrants Signed.
No real updates, the Fed Subcommittee met last week, we then heard the same presentation. E-School Council got canceled this month and have also canceled this month.
Educational Programming Subcommittee will be meeting on the 16th of January when we get back to talk about the program of study. And just a plug for it, I know all of these, you know, the Barbara's presentation tonight, and it will all be presented at the school committee meeting, but if you want to be part of a more robust discussion about it, that's more than just being able to ask a question or give a comment as a member of the public, these Subcommittee meetings are really a place to get involved a few, and they're all open to the public, so.
Awesome, thank you. Carrie?
Salary negotiations will be meeting on January 6th, and the Middle School Council's next meeting is January 25th.
Great, thanks, Michelle.
I have nothing.
Ellie?
Plymouth River School Council met last week just to have a quick budget discussion before we hit January, and policy, I'll be reaching out to you guys, we'll be planning a January meeting and talking about a lot of the things that were on the agenda tonight, but technology policies, attendance policy we can look at, and some of the competency determinations once we have a little more guidance.
The Finance and Facilities Subcommittee met twice last week, a lot of time together. On our first meeting, we went over just the 26, FY '26 budget priorities, and we heard just kind of a, can I call it a rough draft? Of the operating budget proposals from the building principals. Katie and Ayesha went through the presentations. We didn't go through the numbers, we just went through high-level documentation. And then on Thursday, when we met, we heard for our special education, athletics, technology, facilities, and transportation budget proposals. And there are warrants in your pocket.
Great, thanks. And then as far as mine, Foster, it's a continuing theme, Foster had to cancel their school council meeting, so that's been postponed. And I don't have anything else. All right, so, item 11, actually, before I get there, oh, yeah, no, item 11, anything under 48 hours? I did want to mention, we had an executive session earlier today, we discussed two contracts, one for Katie Roberts as superintendent, and for Erica Pollard to extend her contract. We are going to have a special meeting this week, hopefully booking, scheduling that for Thursday at 4:30. We want to get everything buttoned up before the start of the year, so that we start the year off fresh, so look forward to that. That will be an added school committee meeting coming up. The one after that will be January 13th at 6:30. We've got a January 16th, which is a Thursday, that's our budget meeting. We'll hear part of the budget on January 13th, then we'll continue the budget discussion on January 16th, and then the next meeting after that will be January 23rd, so lots of meetings coming up. With that, I will take a motion to adjourn.
I will make a motion to adjourn.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.